Okay, 6:35 and I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Milton Board of Selectmen, October 4th, 2012. The first, actually before we even start with anything on the agenda, we do have two moments of silence that I'd like to deliver. The first one is James Sullivan, who was our first town administrator from 1966, 1968. Mr. Sullivan grew up in Somerville, he's a graduate of St. John's High School, North Cambridge. He was a Navy veteran, WWII, received his bachelor's degree in history and government from Boston College. Throughout his years of public service, Mr. Sullivan was known for his fiscal responsibility, his fiscally responsible but progressive ideas and was never at a loss for words to support those ideas. Mr. Sullivan, as I said, was the first, the first-
Executive-
-executive secretary for the town of Milton, 1966 to 68. So, and he just passed on September 26th, 2012. So, if you could have a moment of silence for Mr. Sullivan. And also, former chief of police, Richard G. Wells, father of our current chief of police, Richard Wells, 43-year employee at the town of Milton, the police department, 50-year resident of the town of Milton. Chief Wells was born in Boston and grew up in Dorchester, graduated from Dorchester High School, was a WWII Navy veteran, a member of the Milton Police Association, a life member of the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police. He survived by his wife Virginia and five sons, including present chief of police, Richard G. Wells, Jr. He passed on October 1st. Okay. You're going to have to be kind to me tonight because I'm just 48 hours out of surgery for a hernia operation, so if I say anything weird, that's why. First order of business is approval of the meetings of September 20th, 2012.
Move approval, second.
Okay, it's been, motion to approve the minutes has been seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Confirmation of future meeting dates. The next meeting date we have is October 18th, 2012. Anybody have any problems with that? Okay. Item four on the agenda is citizen speak. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hi, how you doing? Can you just state your name?
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. And I'm here to talk about the impact of the demolition of 131 Elliott Street. A good friend, my beloved friend, Thomas Maloney, retired state police colonel, now deceased, used to say to me, "Margie," he called me "Margie," "Margie, never assume anything." So, I'm not going to assume what I read in today's Milton Times as to who is going to be charged with the duty to inform the abuddists when this demolition is going to take place. And I am here to speak in behalf of several of the people on Elliott Street who stopped going to the planning board meetings because they hate to get up and speak at a public meeting because they're not used to doing that. I was last before you in June, I was pre, there were two people that was here, that were here before me, that asked you to take the vote to demolish the building. And I came a couple of weeks later and said, "Well, let's hold off until the planning board, give them a little more time for the carnies to come through with what the planning board was requiring and what the zoning bylaws required." And of course, as we know, they didn't, they didn't do that. At the time, as the summer progressed, I was becoming increasingly concerned because there was no rain. And you may remember that huge fire in Braintree with the Grove Manor, which is an assisted living place and has Alzheimer's residents. And that started with a single cigarette butt. I could point out, and it's not a threat now because we've had rain, but during the summer, we didn't, it was very, very dry, and I became increasingly concerned because I could point out where an incendiary device could land over at that building and the damage that it would do. I experienced discomfort and more than that with 36 Central. During the construction, they had K&amp;K company come down and drill the street, drill the streets so that the water in the sewer could be connected to 36 Central. And in the course of that, it was, they created such a fall, such a, into the ground, that a boulder in my driveway came down and hit my car. So, I suffered property damage. I will say that the, the Orin War, the company that went through with the project, did pay for the construction, for the, for my car to be fixed. But as you know, once a car is damaged, it has lost its value. You talk to the carfax and the value of that car has diminished. So, I suffered property damage as a result of the construction that went on across the street. My backyard is 300 feet from the, from Elliott, from the Henry's building. But I have a big buffer of pine trees, evergreen trees, deciduous trees that hopefully will shield me. But those people on Elliott Street, right across the street from that, from that building, have no such protection. And I gave you an example of how I endured property damage. I'm concerned about the health, the safety, and the property of those people as well. I raised this point with the planning board at the last meeting, and of course, now that the project is not before the planning board, their reply to me was, "Well, according to Mr. Clark, it's the Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen, the Building Department, and the Board of Health." Well, well, which one? As I said, I was taught, never assume anything. So, who is going to be the board? Who is going to notify the abuddists as to when this tremendous project is going to take place?
There will be notification, I can assure you of that.
But-
And we'll be in plenty of time before the demolition does occur.
But how? Will they receive letters in the mail? Mr. Whiteside suggested, he suggested that since the Times reporter was in the meet, at the meeting in the back, that pull it within the Times. Well, that's not notifying the abuddists.
When, only because I have this experience-
Mm-hmm.
-when you demolish a building, the responsibility is on the demolition contractor, not the town, to notify the abuddists.
Okay.
And it's done in leaflet form?
Done in-
Leaflet, they just hand out leaflets.
So, something will be left on your, on your doorstep.
Yeah, and you'll be given maybe three days' notice, four days' notice, that's it.
Now, clearly, when it does happen, because it's going to be, happen over a very short period of time-
Mm-hmm.
...we've been told that there's, that there is some asbestos in the building, but very little. There's, as far as we know, no other hazardous material in the building. But, that being said, because it is a condemnation, what they do to keep everything down is they constantly pour water on it as they're, as they demolish the building to keep any dust from flying around. But it will be, it's going to go 24/7 for a couple of days.
And I understand that when, I don't know whether it was Mr. Lynch or whether it was Mr. Prondak that was before you, talked about the MBTA having to shut down the trolley system?
Probably two days.
Okay, and I just want to remind you that, that trolley system was shut down, oh, two to three years ago, maybe I've lost track of time, four year and a half. While Mashmont Station was being constructed, and of course, they had to use buses.
Right.
This is only going to be a day, two days maybe, that they will have to suffer that inconvenience.
Right.
But the abuddists are going to have to live through, so I'm very dangerous.
Yes, no question. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be tremendous inconvenience for, for a couple of days.
And who is-
Unfortunately, not much we can do about it.
And who is going to oversee the demolition crew to make sure that the abuddists are going to be notified?
I mean, it would be the building inspector's responsibility to make sure that everything's carried out.
But it's a question that the building department asks the demolition contractor, "Did you notify the abuddists?" And he has to take their word for it.
The building department?
Yes.
So-
So, if they don't, shame on the demolition-
All right, so Mr. Prondak, you're talking about-
Yes.
Prondak, it's part of the permitting process. And by the way, so your, your environmental issues?
Hmm.
You know, you have to get sign off, you have to get an environmental report on the building, you have to get all your shut offs, water, sewer, gas, electric, you have to get affidavits from all the utility companies. They've all got to be submitted to the building department before the demolition permit is issued, okay?
So, you feel pretty confident that this is going to be, go without any problems and inconvenience to the-
It's not unusual, Margaret, it's, it's the normal procedure in any demolition project. Nothing different is going to happen here.
Okay, except that this is the first, in my knowledge, of anything like this going on in Milton.
Well, you're taking down a big building, I mean, you have, you know, everybody wants the building taken down. You know, there's proper procedures that are in place, and you just have to bear with it for a couple of days, that's it.
Okay. And you may recall that when I was at this meeting, talking to you and giving you the history of that site, that I suggested that this would be a perfect site for use of the Community Preservation Act funds. So, I'm going to stay through the discussion of the Community Preservation Act. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Oh, do you guys want to come in? Do you guys want to come in?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Hi, my name is Diana Wong. I just wanted to address the board that I reside at 9 Grafton Avenue, and I wanted to make you guys aware that Grafton Ave is known in the past as a cut-through. We have high activity of volume normally in the past. It's for those drivers that come off of Edge Hill Road and come on, take a right onto Grafton, take a left onto State. We have the volume from there because those are the drivers that are more aggressive, that want to get onto Bryant Ave quickly. So, we have people that cut through our street with the high activity. So, that's one issue that we've always had, and it's always continuing. Just recently, with the past few days, we have now a huge increase in volume with traffic now coming in from the Quincy end. There's, I mean, I was home on Wednesday, and from 8 o'clock till, I think like 3:00 or so, there's over 255 cars taking a left. I have pictures here that show it too. I mean, I didn't know for a short time period, just FYI, if you want, I can email it to you. But I just want to let you know, our, our street right now is already stressed out, as is with the amount of traffic that we have before, and now this new increase in volume that's coming now from the Quincy side, we just can't handle it. Right now, there's kids on our streets, we can't have our kids on, on there playing. We have aggressive drivers that are coming off Edge Hill, now coming onto Grafton, now coming from the other end of Quincy. So, on top of that, we want the board to know that our neighbors are really concerned and want you guys to be aware that any type of future activity, that you should take this into consideration. Another thing that I'm also seeing, because I also have pitches for that too, is, the new thing is now we're having cars coming down to Edge Hill, taking a right, doing a U-turn in front of the house, and going back onto Grafton. The reason being is these cars can't take a left anymore, like they just can't get across. They come down Edge Hill and they just can't cut across. So, now they're using our street as a U-turn too, just in front of the house. So, that's another safety concern. So, I just want the board to be aware that there's other citizens that are here on the street, and the neighbors are really concerned and they want you to know, and any type of future activities that you make note of it for your planning committees.
Yeah, we definitely are, we definitely do understand the problems in that area.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, it's just the problems of East Milton Square that just kind of spill out.
Right.
And, you know, what's, it has exacerbated that even more is the construction on Governor's Road has pushed traffic off onto those other streets.
Right.
And even though right now, I don't think there is any construction, although there's going to be construction of Quincy side starting very shortly, and the traffic commission has, in fact, we're going to discuss that tonight, a plan to deal with that during that construction period. But the overall plan on how to deal with all the traffic, that's cut-through traffic-
Grafton Ave has always been a cut-through. I mean, these, we have the aggressive ones, the ones that come down from like, they start from the beginning of Grafton and then just to get down to State, and that's not very far, and they're flooring it to 25 to 30 miles. And you can't, you can have a cop there, but they can't ticket them. And they've even said that to us. So, we just want them to be aware, we just can't handle any more traffic in the street. I mean, the burden is on there right now. So, we just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Certainly are.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to address the board?
No.
Nobody else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the 350th Committee update from Linda Lee Sheridan. I guess we have two orders of business here, one is to extend the, or reappoint the committee for an additional period of time, and then you're going to give us an update. So, I don't know what you want to take first.
Well, I'll start with the extending our time. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come tonight and share some more of our stories with you. As I like to say, the red, white, and blue stripes are still on the street, and that should remind everyone that the celebration isn't over yet. The 350th Committee has been working for almost two years now, and as much as we think, you know, the year is ending and our term really should end, we still have work to do. A part of what we've rolled out this year is accepting donations for a legacy gift for the town. And that legacy gift was, we put out for a lot of information from citizens, and it was determined that we would do beautification and civic improvements. So, we're, we're still not sure exactly how much money we'll have to spend, and we won't know that until our last event, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But what we'd like to do is to have, ask for our term, respectfully ask for our term to be extended through May town meeting. And at that time, we would like to make a presentation on what exactly our expectation was of how we would spend those, those funds. So, that's our, that's our request, and-
We do have a motion here in front of us if somebody wants to. Motion would be to reappoint the following members of the 350th Annual Committee to Serve through May 2013. Wallace Sisson, Brian Dougherty, Elizabeth Neville, Patricia Desmond, Janet Christensen, Hyson Krishlal, Joanne Truffonne, Linda Lee Sheridan, Mary McLaughlin, Dorothy Cutler, Emma Jean Molton, Kathy Fagan, Kevin Donahue, and Brian Kelly.
One second motion.
Okay, most have been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Other than the motion on your request that you just made, it's May of 213.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. So, what else is happening with the-
Well, we, we have lots coming up this weekend. On Saturday, we have a horse show. There's a beautiful article in the Milton Times, and there've been actually notifications in the Globe and some of the local, other local papers, but it's going to be held at Prouse Farm. Milton does have a rich history of horse racing and farms around town, which they're diminishing. You know, every year we lose another one, it seems, but this is going to be a big celebration at Prouse Farm, which is actually at Meditech, right over the Milton line into Canton. And it's going to be from 9:00 AM until 4:00 in the afternoon. Free admission, there are going to be 19 different classes and competitions, if you want this, I'll give it to you. And all the information is available on our website, Milton350th.com. And there'll be food for sale, there'll be pony rides for kids, face painting, it will be a great family afternoon. And you don't have to be a horse rider to enjoy the day, it really will be lots of fun and activities for your, for your family. So, we encourage people to come out for that, it should be a great event. And lots of people, this was, this was an event that, right when we started our 350th, I got an email from a citizen who said, "What about doing a horse show?" And, you know, she got some people together, it's Jody Leveroni and Stephanie Gill, and they've been working tirelessly to really spearhead this with the, you know, help from Janet Christensen and myself on the, from the committee. So, it's, it's going to be a great day.
That's a great day.
Yeah, on Saturday. And on Sunday, of course, we're going to be at Celebrate Milton, which, did I just hear that it's been definitely moved inside?
Yes.
Okay, so it will be at Cunningham Polycom. And we'll have a booth, and we're going to have, try to get people's input from the community, that people that attend, just to find out some things like what are their favorite events that we've had in the 350th, what would they like to see go into our time capsule, and what, you know, any suggestions about our legacy gift. So, please stop by our booth at Celebrate Milton, we'll also have memorabilia. We have a few hats left, a few mugs left, we do have some plates that you can order and get signed. We will have DVDs of the parade, and we'll be able to take orders for our DVD of the Ronan Tynan and Pauline Wells concert, we have a DVD of that as well. So, we have some exciting, you know, opportunities, so stop by our booth. And actually, that will be available at all, we'll, we'll be setting up our memorabilia at all upcoming events. And then, also in October, on Saturday, the 21st, we're going to have a Magical Milton 350th Trolley Tour. We're really excited about this, and word is getting out fast because one bus has already sold out. We're going to have four different buses, and they will leave from Cunningham Park. So, one will leave at 12, one will leave at 12:20, 2:30, and 2:50. And it's approximately a two-hour trolley ride. The tickets are only $10 apiece, $5 for children and seniors. And you will not get off the trolley, you will ride on the trolley and you'll have a little guided tour, and it will stop at some familiar places around town and maybe some places that you haven't heard about. And people will get on and tell about the different sites. We're also going to have goodie bags from the different community organizations that have signed up to sponsor, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just take a moment and read some of the sponsors for this event. Dependable Cleaners, Milton Rotary, Paul Dolan for two funeral home sites, Al Thomas, Success Realty, Ben's Factory, Galatea, 88 Wharf, The Plate, Central Auto, Mackey's, and At Home Elder Care. So, as I said, tickets are going for this, and there is a phone number that you can call, it's 617-696-4983 to reserve tickets, or you can just email us at the, you know, the Milton 350th website. So, that's again on Sunday, the 21st of October. And then rounding out our events in November, we're going to have a big gala, and that's going to be held on Saturday night, November 17th. It's the night, the weekend before Thanksgiving, when traditionally the foundation used to do their events, so it was a free weekend and we thought that one would work. It will be held at the Hooza Club, we're going to have heavy horseshoes, and we hope to keep the price reasonable, we're shooting for $35, but all that isn't ironed out yet. And so, we hope that townsfolk will come out, and obviously, you know, elected members of the, of the community as well, to help us really cap off a great year of events. And at that time, we will have our time capsule that will be filling and sealing, and that will be placed eventually at, in the library. They've assured us that they have a special spot to store that for us, so lots of things are still happening, and we hope to see folks out and about.
It's certainly going to be fun, yeah, the fireworks are incredible, especially with the, the natural fireworks.
Behind, yes.
Pretty cool.
Even if we wanted to, we couldn't have made that happen.
I know.
It was great. And people are still talking about the parade, you know, just having generations of families come together just to celebrate, it was, it was great, so. Well, it took a lot of people, you know, banding together to, many hands make light work, and it really, it's been a wonderful experience. We've met people across the town that we never would have met before, so I highly advocate for getting involved in town events, and it's been a labor of love for all of us, so.
Committee's done a great job, I know much hard work that must be.
It's been great, though.
How's your budget, Linda Lee?
So, right now, we have funding for all of the events that are still scheduled. I don't have the budget numbers, but we, for example, the horse show, we had budgeted about $3,500, and it was, it's, looks like we're going to make money on that, it's not even going to cost us anything. Because sponsorships have come in, same with the trolley tour, we're hoping, those sponsorships are smaller, but with the price of the tickets and the sponsorships, we're trying to just keep things at a reasonable cost, so, you know, members of the community can come out and participate, and still have money left over. So, we're hoping, I mean, I, I probably shouldn't say a number, but I'll, I'll say, you know, we're hoping to have $50,000 for, for legacy, it might be 35, I, I don't have that number in my head, I'm sorry. It was earlier on in the year when we were meeting on a regular, you know, we still meet once a month, but it was twice a month, and I could tell you those numbers more clearly, but.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Linda Lee.
Thank you. Will you just pass that down to Dennis, please? Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of the Community Preservation Act with Colleen Corona. Colleen is the chair of the Easton Board of Selectmen, and she's a huge proponent of the Community Preservation Act, and she's here to tell us what Easton has done with its community preservation money, and hopefully just to kind of enlighten the board and enlighten people, you know, the audience and listening on TV. So, welcome, Colleen.
It's great to be here. Easton and Milton don't share a border, but we do share two things, we share an incredibly hard-working state senator, and we also share a town administrator, our current town administrator was your town administrator, and obviously, I enjoy working with him and using the CPA money like we do in Easton. I know that Milton is considering, is, has a vote coming up on the CPA, and I was invited here by Mr. Colleen to talk about what we've done in Easton with the CPA. Dennis has a business in Easton, and so he's able to see in our community the things we're able to do with CPA funds. And the first thing I want to say is that I really feel that CPA funds have really allowed us to control our community's destiny, and I really don't feel that that's overstating in any way. We joined the CPA in 2001, when there was 100% match, and in the 12 years we've been involved in CPA, we've received over $5 million in state matching funds. And although I know now the matching funds have decreased to about 22%, they are expected to go up next year with the recent legislation that passed that funds that matching fund more significantly. Some of the things we've been able to do with CPA, as far as development, we had a large project in downtown Easton involving a historic mill complex that a developer was going to come and completely destroy. And with CPA money, we were, we were able to find a new developer to take over the site, and we used CPA money to buy a, a historic preservation restriction on the property, and also give the developer a loan so that the existing buildings are going to be restored exactly as they are, and the density of the project is much lower. We're able to get the wastewater treatment plant that was going to be used for that much larger development of 230 apartments, now it's decreased to 112, and the leftover wastewater treatment plant is going to sue our downtown. So, we were able to do that entire project with, by leveraging those CPA funds. We also had the trustees of reservations come in to buy a parcel in town, and instead of buying that parcel, the town buying that parcel, we were able to buy a conservation restriction on the property with CPA funds, so for $500,000, we were able to preserve 35 acres of land. So, it's not just that you spend the money, you can leverage that money for historic preservation, affordable housing, open space preservation, not spend the whole amount and still get what you want done in your community. Right now, projects like that, historic preservation, open space preservation, the things that actually make our community the communities that they are, the legacy that we have in our community, can't find funding. And those historic buildings are being destroyed, open space is being purchased and developed. And what this money has allowed us to do is to really pick and choose what we want to happen in our community. The economy's bad now, and that makes the situation worse. But even when the economy's good and you have the choice of choosing public safety or historic preservation, generally, the choice is going to be public safety. So, I really feel that it gives us the ability to fund things that we can't get funding for elsewhere. On the affordable housing front, and that was a big issue in Easton, we're well below 10%, and 40B is a constant issue in our community. A portion of CPA funds have to be used for affordable housing. What we did in Easton was we set up an affordable housing trust, used the CPA funds to fund that trust, and that trust has some very innovative programs they're doing in Easton, including a first-time home buyers program. So, we'll fund the gap between what the homeowner can afford, a qualified homeowner, and the price of the home. So, existing small homes in our- So existing small homes in our community are, are, remain affordable and a deed restriction goes on that property to make it affordable in perpetuity. We're also beginning a small ti- a small grant program for, uh, low-income seniors in our community that need emergency repairs to their homes so we can provide them grants, grants out of that affordable housing trust so they can r- make repair to their houses. So we've been able to do incredibly creative things in the community. I think it's one of the biggest assets we have right now and, uh, I wanted to come here and tell you how wonderful it's been for Easton and answer any questions you have.
Um, yeah, first question I have is, um, in terms of what do the residents in general think about it? I mean, obviously, it's, it's an additional tax, so it's, it is an additional burden on, on the taxpayers. The town of Milton, we're estimating that it's gonna be about $83 for the average home in Milton per year, um, which certainly isn't a huge number, but, but it's still a tax. How is, how are the residents?
Well, I think that, first of all, I call it a surcharge and I know we can, we can, but the thing is taxes usually don't have state matching funds. So, uh, the community has been very supportive. It's been in place for 10 years. Two years ago, there, there was an attempt to roll back the 3% to 1%, uh, which was overwhelmingly voted down at town meeting. Consistently, the residents of the community turn out to support it because they understand we have tracts of land in Easton farms. I know that she was just talking about horse farms in your community that are vistas in our community that once they're gone, they're gone forever. And this has given us the, the ability to partner with other people to maintain those vistas. So once the community understands that you could have 35 homes, for the, for example, the trustees of reservations property was gonna have 35 homes, or you can have a preserved open park in the heart of your community, we've really had, we've never had a CPA project go to town meeting that hasn't been supported by the community. And really, I'd like to reiterate, these, the, this is the character of your community that you're preserving. But in addition to that, it gives you a tool. If someone comes to you and says, "I want money for historic preservation for an existing structure," when you give them that money, you get a historic preservation restriction in return. We also require them to match some of those funds, so it isn't a straight gift. That organization has to work to, to raise funds to preserve that property as well. You can save the buildings and the landscapes that make your community, your community before they're gone forever. And I have to say that over and over again. And that's what we've been able to do. You lose that opportunity if you don't have CPA. And you lose the opportunity to get a match from the state that's really your community's money coming back to you to use to ma- to, to save the things in Milton that are important for Milton.
Colleen, I know you're a huge advocate for the CPA and we've, we've spoken at length, but is there any downside to this? Like, have you ever, and I know you'll be hon- because you've always been honest with me, but is there any downside to the CPA in Easton?
I, I guess I just don't see the downside. Uh, we have, it's, it's a ta- it's a surcharge or tax, no matter what you want to call it, that has to be voted on by the community. Our community voted for that surcharge. They've never voted to roll back that surcharge. The first $100,000 is exempt and we have low-income family exemptions as well and low-income senior exemptions. I really can't state enough that there isn't a downside. We've been able to build much-needed recreation fields. We've been able to preserve buildings that would have been really destroyed if we didn't have this money to fund the restoration of those buildings, including an HH Richardson building that, you know, would have been lost if we hadn't had the money to, to restore the outside. So I don't see the downside. It takes the pressure off of finding private organizations to fund these projects that otherwise wouldn't be funded.
Right. And it can even help, um, you know, you generally don't think of it as helping commercial areas, but it can help commercial areas as well if you have a historic downtown district to maintain the character, the historic character of that. You can use community preservation funds as long as you get the, you know, the, the historic deed restriction back on it.
Actually, that's a good point. Can you use it for storefronts?
If they're historic.
Yeah.
If they're, yeah.
Yeah.
The movie theater in, in downtown.
Absolutely. We've used it on, um, we've used it on, um, outdoor historic gardens. We used it on a historic church because as, i- i- it's the facade of the building, so it doesn't matter what type of house of worship it is, if it's a historic building, you can use them for the exterior of the building. Um, we have a war memorial that we used it to restore. We'd used it to, uh, we're trying to form, we just formed a local historic district and we're trying to form another and you can actually use it for the survey work for the local historic district. Um, we repaired roofs on an HH Richardson building. We're using it to, uh, the affordable housing component. Actually, a portion of that funding that went to the affordable housing trust is funding an affordable housing coordinator for our community to run the lottery programs for our 40Bs, to find the buyers for our first-time home buyer program, to put the grant program in place. Uh, and, uh, you know, in Easton, there was a big concern about that 40B money. How was it going to be spent and where were we going to spend it? We spent a portion of it on that development because it was a 40B, but we got exactly what we wanted and the other portion we're using for that first-time home buyer, our citizens wanted existing housing to be made affordable and that program and the grant program for repairs allows existing home pro- hot housing to remain affordable and be deeded affordable in perpetuity. I just, there's not a limit to what you can do with this money to, uh, keep your community's character. And I can't say it enough how excited I am to have this program in Easton.
Yeah, that's a good point with the, with the 40B. I, I've always said there's, there's two approaches you can take to 40B. One's reactive and the other one's proactive. And reactive is generally, does not have a good outcome.
Right.
And proactive is you're working with a developer, you've identified sites that are appropriate and you get a 40B project or an affordable project that meets the community's needs and is where it should be cited as opposed to being forced on your throat.
Well, with the shovel shop project, we were able to get exactly what we wanted. We had a proposal that was, like I said, 230 units and we were able to use 40B, I mean, uh, CPA funds to get that project redesigned exactly the way the community wanted it to be designed. So it's a tool that we can use.
How did you use the funds in that project?
The developer came in and was going to build, take the historic shovel shops, beautiful buildings that are on the National Trust for Historic Preservation's list of endangered buildings, cut the roofs off and go up two stories. So there would have been four-story buildings in the heart of our downtown without maintaining any of the historic characters, or he was going to raise the buildings. We partnered with the developer. We used $3 million in CPA money to buy a historic preservation restriction on the party, property, which made it affordable for the developer. The reason why the first developer needed 230 units is because that's what made it fiscally feasible to build on that small site. With a $300, $3 million historic preservation restriction, the new developer had the funds he needed to close the gap so that he could build a much smaller project. In addition, we gave him a loan, uh, for those buildings that, and that's something else you can do with CPA, you can loan money, that he's gonna be paying back starting in five years, uh, on that property. So we used that money to leverage the developer to get the project we wanted. So it's not that you have to spend all the money, you don't have to build an affordable housing complex, but say you had an seat, uh, uh, an affordable housing complex going in an historic structure and they wanted to build an, an addition that you thought was unseemly or didn't fit into the community. You could say, "Well, we'll pay a historic preservation restriction on the property, makes it feasible for the developer to build within the existing structure. You get what you want, you, you know, and, uh, the developer gets the ability to build the project within the existing building." So there's just so many ways you can use this to, to leverage things in your community instead of paying for them outright.
There was just one thing that, um, you said it was low-income seniors? Is that correct? Or is it all seniors?
Well, right now, the project is low-income seniors.
Low-income seniors.
So, but you can set up the affordable housing trust any way you want, but the thing is we wanted to make sure that we were providing, instead of building housing, providing for existing housing to allow housing to remain affordable and seniors to stay in their housing.
Doesn't have to be low-income. In order to meet 40B, it's gotta be affordable.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm saying, I really mean moderate income. I'm not.
I'm actually just talking about the tat, the so-called surcharge, as, uh, Colleen said.
Oh, the surcharge, the, the exemption on the surcharge would be for...
Low-income families.
Anybody below 100% of, um, well, elderly below 100% of area median, family income. So if you're an elderly individual and your family income is less than 100% of area median, then you're exempt from the surcharge.
Okay, so it's not all seniors?
Not all seniors, though. No, but those on, those on fixed incomes, those on just social security and, and very little else would absolutely be exempt.
And then, Colleen, if you wouldn't mind just, um, because I'm, I'm learning about this as well. When do you determine what the projects are and who approves them?
The Community Preservation Committee is a committee formed. It's, uh, under the statute, it's made up of some members of other committees. Like in Easton, it's the, one a member of the Historic Commission, one member of the Housing Authority, one member of the Conservation Commission. There's a statute that lays out who's gonna serve on that committee and then there's a couple citizen, citizens at will, you know? And so, uh, the way the system works in Easton is we put a notice in the paper requesting proposals for the CPA. Those projects go before the CPA committee. The CPA committee makes a recommendation, uh, to town meeting and that's the only thing that can be voted on, is that recommendation. Changes can't be made to the recommendation at town meeting. So the CPA committee puts the proposals forward and in Easton, like I said, it's, it's a general rule that if someone's asking for money for historic preservation, they have to come up with a mass, match. They'll have to apply for grant for Mass Historic or do fundraising on their own. So we don't give them a straight grant. We ask for them to put some skin in the game. So they come, come to town meeting with a list of projects and, uh, making sure that we have the funding to cover those projects. The other thing about CPA is you can borrow against it, which some people worry about. We don't worry about it. We borrow, you know, we recently bonded some money for a CPA purchase and, uh, the interest rate on the bonding was a half a percent and that gives us money still in our treasury because we have five priority parcels in Easton that we've determined we'd like to purchase with CPA funds in the future. So we borrow to leverage that money as well. Very small amounts, but we do borrow against it. So, um, this year, we did a, a field complex, 16-acre field complex. We did the trustees of reservations property, you know, once again leveraging money to get that land preserved. We, uh, provided a grant for, uh, we looked in, I don't know if we actually funded it, though, Habitat for Humanity House, $50,000 grant for Habitat for Humanity House and some restoration work on a, um, a historic structure in downtown. And also shifting the 10% to the Affordable Housing Trust, which is something now we do because 10% has to be set aside for affordable housing. So they bring it to town meeting and town meeting votes on it.
Votes on the project and the amount of money?
Votes on the individual projects and the amount of money.
And the amount of money.
Just, just like you would with any other appropriation.
Yes, just like a capital budget, you know? So, um, the thing is it's made up of members of different town boards, so they represent their interests. The Rec Commission has someone on there who represents recreational interest, Conservation Commission, open space, historic, you know, so they bring those, uh, projects back to their individual boards for discussion as well.
The, the huge change in all our, in addition to, uh, the fact that they've increased the funding, unfortunately, only, only for one year, but they, according to the legislature, they're gonna come back year after year and try and appropriate money each year, but $25 million this coming year, plus they, um, they allow community preservation funds to be used on existing parks even if they weren't...
Purchased with...
Purchased with community preservation funds, which means that any park in the town is eligible for restoration with CPA funds.
Which wasn't the case in the past. It had to be purchased with CPA money to be restored with CPA money. Now with the new legislation, if you have a park that needs, the track is, you know, um, in bad shape, you could use CPA funds to restore the track on that par- in that park. So that's another way you can use the money. And I know, as, as he mentioned, the, the match has, um, decreased over the years, but I, I personally don't have any investments that I know of that are making 22% right now. And, uh, you get 22 cents on the dollar.
That's a very good, I mean, that's...
And that's this year. Next year, you'll be getting more because of the funding.
That's a good point because if you put a million dollars in the bank, you're getting 1% or less.
Right, and if you...
22% return you're getting.
Right.
And that's the, that's the low this year. Next year, it'll be higher. So, uh, I really can't more enthusiastically say, without jumping up and down, how we've been able to use these funds in Easton to make our community keep the character that we want it to have. And it's just been an amazing tool and I can't say anything else to...
Good.
Any other?
Great. Well, I know firsthand that, um, Colleen has, she's like a, uh, an idol in Easton because of, um, her leadership skills, but also because of the CPA. And, um, I mean, she's, she's somebody I do trust. It's, it's, um, the CPA was something that I was on the fence about and, you know, I did go to her and she explained it to me in layman's terms. I do get it now, it's just, um, and I, I thank you for coming here tonight.
It's been a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item seven on the agenda is a, um, a discussion of Governor's Road and Plymouth Avenue closures with, um, is Joe here? No, we can go to something else on the agenda while we're looking for them. Number eight, we need, I think, Joe Farr also. Is he here? He's around someplace, but, yeah. Anne Marie's looking for him. We can go to item number nine while we're at it, uh, which is the approval of an amendment to the Fruit Center liquor license. And this is a motion to amend the Fruit Center liquor license to include the sale of microbrew slash craft brew beers with the understanding that the product will be displayed in an eight-foot wide upright cooler within 200, within the 200-foot area designated for the sale of wine and will be sold during the approved hours at 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sundays 12:00 to 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Uh, Joel is here. So why don't we just, why don't we do this and then we'll, we'll get back to that?
Chairman, this is Michael Menyose from the Fruit Center.
Oh.
Okay, good morning.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. So I second the motion.
Okay.
That was a motion you made?
It, it was a motion. Let's have a, uh, and it's been seconded, so now we can have some discussion. Let's, um, so I, I guess, question for Anne Marie first. A change to, uh, a liquor license does not need a public hearing? It can be changed by the...
Um, this is not a change to the liquor license because in November of 2004, the board voted the license for wine malt and cordials.
Okay, fine, fine. So, so, so it's really not an amendment to the, to the license per se, even though that's what it's called in this thing?
That's right.
Okay, so it's really just allowing you to...
He's just expanding his product.
Okay, all right. And, um...
Can I ask, it, what is that license? Is it a liquor license or is it a beer?
Beer and wine.
It's beer malt, it's, it's wine malt and cordials. It's a, it's a license, an all-alcoholic license.
All-alcoholic, okay.
Yes.
So, why don't you explain, Michael, what you're planning on doing?
The, the hope is to actually just, uh, bring in, uh, microbrews and craft brewed beers. We have no intention and no, uh, no desire to bring in any mass-produced beers, but we're hoping to bring in, um, beers that, um, um, would satisfy a more refined palate, so to speak. So we're looking for small batches, high-end, um, beer. And certainly not a whole lot of space for that either. We're looking at about, uh, an eight-foot refrigerated case to hopefully satisfy a need and, and create, or add to what we already do with our wine department. You know, our concern from the beginning was always, um, in terms of beer, which is why we never at the beginning went for a beer license, uh, we wanted to just carry wine, sell wine. Because our biggest concern was, um, the kids. We have a lot of kids that work at the store and obviously we're concerned about, uh, people trying to purchase alcohol who are underage. But I think, again, getting away from anything mass-produced and, and, uh, going with a higher end, um, uh, beer that kids really wouldn't be interested in would be able to obviously dodge that bullet as well in terms of, um, that concern.
So this would be more like the Wachusett's as opposed to the San Adams?
Exactly, and I could, yeah, you, exactly. Against, and, and a lot of, um, you know, companies and breweries that you've probably never even heard of, uh, which the other upside is that most of them are local too. They're both, most of them Massachusetts, small breweries and breweries.
Blue Hills is really nice up here.
I'm sorry?
Blue Hills?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. You know, Nantucket makes a great beer and there's just a lot of really, really nice, small breweries around here that people have to travel to get a lot of these beers. And they'll travel long distances sometimes in order to do that. Where it would be obviously very convenient if we were able to offer that to our, our consumers. And again, just to add to that, you know, what we already do.
Is Milton Package Store and East Milton aware of what you're?
Actually, I don't think they are.
Yeah, no, okay.
But I'm not really sure.
Okay, okay.
So my, my question, again, because I'm slightly confused, is you said it's an all-alcoholic license?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So that means he can sell hard liquor?
He can, it's.
Is that correct?
I think with, with, when we originally got the license, it was, we were issued a full liquor license with restrictions.
With restrictions.
And the restriction was that we'd only be able to sell wine. So we were, issued by the state a full liquor license, but the town restricted it to simply wine.
So this wouldn't have to go back to the A, B, C, C for?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
The only concern I had in reading your letter, and I don't have any problem with the idea that you have the wine and the beer in a particular area.
Sure.
But I had a concern when you mentioned about setting up a display by the registers.
Sure, sure.
And so I do have a concern about that aspect of.
Sure.
Why would you, you know, I just am a little hesitant about having a display by the registers. I would think that it would be more appropriate in its separate department.
What we took it to do now, and I don't know if you've been in the store recently.
Probably not in the past month or so.
We have one, we call it front-end display, which is a special area, display area in front of, we have one in front of every Renefi registers, but we have any, any wine that we want to feature, new wine, any wine we want on special, we put on one of those front-end displays. And obviously it highlights it a little bit more. But the idea was to possibly do that with a beer as well too. So if we wanted to run a special on a particular beer or highlight a new beer, whatever that may, maybe, we'd put it at the front of the store there in front of our registers in one of those special areas. Certainly, it's not something we'd have to do if you'd rather us not do that. But that's, that's why we typically do that and why we have that space.
Is that within the two hundred foot designated area that we're talking about?
It actually isn't with, when we did the two hundred square feet, I don't think it was necessarily two hundred square feet within one particular area, but just two hundred square feet total. Exactly, yes.
I think it's, I mean, your business is, is doing great and, and obviously, microbrews is the latest trend.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you have to, I think it's a great idea to do it.
All right, so motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Thing done all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the time, guys.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Take care.
Okay, now let's go back to item seven on the agenda, which is a discussion of Governor's Road Plymouth Avenue closures with Joe Lynch and John Thompson.
Good evening. Sorry to make you take this out of order.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to just update Mr. Lynch on a citizen's speak tonight. A lady made some comments and I wanted to share those with him.
Sure.
A, I think her first name was Diana and last name was Wong. I believe she lives on Grafton Ave, okay? And she expressed a concern about the volume of traffic on the Quincy side of Grafton Avenue. And then she also expressed what I'm sure you're aware of is the cut through. You go down Edge Hill, bang a right on Grafton, left on State Street. But I think one of her main points, and I wanted you to know because I know that you've addressed her concern in a letter, I want you to know that that concern came to this table tonight.
I think she'll be pleased, I hope.
I await with bated breath.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you want to start right in on that? Very good. First of all, the selectmen must remember that we've had an awful lot of traffic concerns focusing on the Governor's Road area. But we recognize as a traffic commission and as a department that whatever you do in one particular area has an opportunity to reverberate out into the abiding neighborhoods. In the process of our department, Public Works Department, undertaking various construction projects on Governor's Road, Water Main Project, Reclamation Project, putting the binder down, about to start sidewalks, then finish paving. When we were doing those works, we had worked out a situation with Quincy to shut, to shut down Governor's Road to local traffic just because of the construction, but at the same token to warn drivers down at the, what's the street?
Upton and Bryant.
Upton, Upton, at Bryant, to warn them that through traffic at Governor's was not possible anymore because of the construction. But we immediately noticed that with, even with those precautions in place, just as our fears were, were allayed, we had that shift over onto Plymouth first and then the people who were trying to use it as a cut through. I mean, the people are not local residents. These are people coming from out of the area, commuting through from southern Quincy and west, and east Quincy, trying to find their way to north reaches. We found that they shifted further over onto Grafton because of an island issue up at our Edge Hill Road, only so they could then make the left-hand turn. So come full circle, Quincy is about to begin their construction project on Governor's Road where they need to shut it down to totally rebuild it. And we said just the opposite, timeout, you can't just shut down Governor's. In fact, this is what happened. And we met with their police department and we met with their Public Works officials. And we kind of laid the law down, saying that in order to ameliorate the traffic concerns, we have to take it further. We have to make you people shut down both Plymouth and Governor's at the town border, notify drivers well in advance, like in Willard and Upton again, of that there is no through traffic whatsoever. And therefore, the detour wouldn't take place. They did simply have to stay either on the expressway or stay on Willard moving up to Granite Avenue. So it's quite to the contrary. The closure that we're looking at is for both roads and only both roads. And I think my legal so far is to say, you can't do one and not the other. You have to do both. Quincy's construction project is about a six-week project, four to six-week project going to be completed in its entirety before the winter, assuming winter doesn't set in too early. Their goal is to complete it this, this fall prior to winter setting in. This gives us a heck of an opportunity to, to measure the inconvenience in our own neighborhoods. They can measure the inconvenience in their neighborhoods, temper it with the benefit that they might be getting by keeping that cut through traffic out of the neighborhood and see how it works. If it works, then the traffic commission at a future date through the selectmen might consider this closure on a more permanent basis. That closure is so bureaucratic, it requires public hearings. It requires actions inter municipally between two communities with agreements, requires mass highway action, all of which, you know, you can't just happen without all of those things happening in a very particular order. So I think this is a great opportunity to, one, allow Quincy to do their work, two, keep the traffic out of the neighborhood, and then, three, give us the ability to look at it and, and see if it was effective. And better yet, to measure if the inconvenience is worthwhile and something the neighbors will put up with. I mean, inconvenience, it's, it's the people who live in that immediate neighborhood who do want to move up and travel through. Milton won't be able to. And the people who live in our neighborhoods who want to travel south towards Home Depot won't be able to. Our community, I think, is better served because if we wanted to move south, we'd just go down Edge Hill to Bryant Ave.
So it's really not bad.
And that's just what you would do. I'm not as confident that the Quincy people will be as comfortable on a permanent basis. So that's, that's the, the crux of the, of the situation and that's what we're asking.
Yeah, I, I guess overall, and, and I can certainly understand why you'd want to do it during the construct because it will just push the tra, you're right. I'm sure it did push the traffic on those other two streets.
Not all of it, but a lot of it.
Right.
You know, some of the people did seek alternate routes, but a lot of it did move over.
Well, the problem is there aren't, other than going through East Milton Square, there really aren't many alternate routes. And, and the reason it's there is because East Milton Square is so bad. So, I mean, clearly, we're just going to be making East Milton Square worse.
The Quincy delegation, there'd be DPW and Police Department, has brought it back to their ward council, precinct council, what do they call it?
Ryan Palmucci Ward Four Council.
Ward Four Council, who's brought it to some of his people and they're satisfied. And the mayor is supportive of it. So they're, they've agreed with the closure if this is what the town is, is going to make them do. I think we don't want them to not control the traffic because it will, in fact, shift onto Plymouth.
Yes, I agree. Yes, that being said, I, again, I have no problem with the closure. I mean, how, how long do we think this is going to be for?
They're saying about six weeks. They're hoping for, it's a complete reconstruction on their part.
Maybe an interesting project to see what it does.
They're, they're, they're moving in a leap of faith. They're, they're confident. They, they are confident to the extent that as part of their construction this year, they will not be putting the speed bumps back on Governor's Road. They're confident that closure is going to, going to stay in place. They believe that. And if, if it blows up and we have to shift this during construction, then they will shift their plans and actually put those speed bumps back in.
Okay, I mean, the only thing is, I just hate to see all the gains we've had in East Milton Square. Just, I mean, it's, it's still bad in East Milton Square. It's still bad where we're going to be dumping all that traffic on too. And that really concerns me.
It should, it should concern you. I think it's, and John can chime in, but I, but I think the reality is it's the people who are on the expressway who, who don't want to be in the expressway and they look towards Granite Ave and don't want to get on Granite Ave. They alternatively, over the years, have learned this other route through our residential neighborhood is a better alternative traffic-wise. Safety-wise, it isn't, but if you, we, we've done traffic counts on Governor's and Plymouth several, several times. Governor's several times and then Plymouth during our detour because we wanted, we didn't want to just have an anecdotal measure of the traffic shifting. We measured the traffic shift. We, we saw it was there.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Absolutely, positively, when you look at the morning peak and the afternoon peak and the direction of where that peak is occurring, we have people from out of town moving through that neighborhood and they don't belong there.
I'm sure you're right. I'm sure you're right. Now, in terms of, have we ever looked at traffic calming measures other than speed bumps? Because I know there are, there are traffic calming measures. And there's certainly traffic enforcement measures that we can take for people with speed.
We, it's not speed. It's not speed.
It's just cut through.
It's sheer volume. The, if you look at thirty, the eighty-fifth percentile ambient background speed, we're looking at twenty-eight miles per hour and that roadway is rated for thirty and it should be. And, you know, you got a couple, a couple knuckleheads will do it, you know, in excessive speed, but not many. It's, speed is not the problem. Volume is very real and it's a real problem. So it's not calming.
And in terms of the volume, I know that the last number that I had in my head was going southbound on Governor's, two thousand cars daily taken in a month of August, which demonstrates that that's a huge volume for a straight, narrow residential street. What I don't know and what, what would be interesting is what the traffic count is. You'd get them all if you had a count right at Bryant and Upton. Because then you'd get the cut-through numbers for Plymouth, Grafton and Governor's altogether.
Subtract out the people going home.
Well, I'm just wondering how much volume is going up to Upton to cut through, which would include Plymouth, Grafton and Governor's.
I think the measure.
I think the easiest cut-through right now definitely is like Governor's. And that's probably explains the two thousand number.
But off, off the top of my head, I want to say the last, the, the average daily traffic we're seeing on Governor's Road is approximately twenty-five hundred cars a day.
Weekdays.
Weekdays. On any given, on any given average road, you would expect the peak hour traffic to be approximately ten percent of the overall daily traffic. So if you're seeing twenty-five hundred cars a day, you would expect to see about two hundred and fifty cars at the peak hour. And on Governor's Road, it's, it was closer to two hundred percent, if not higher than that. So that is a real, you know, it, it really clues you into, you know, that issue really happening at that morning peak up.
And we did a rooftop count by aerial photography. We looked at the size of the neighborhood and we, and we looked at some demographic information of what you would get out of a neighborhood. And, and quite frankly, it's supported, John's statement that he just made is that it's not coming from the neighborhood. It's in fact coming through commuters.
There it is.
The other, the other thing to keep in mind too is that, you know, Granite Avenue through East Milton Square is, is obviously a much bigger road. It's built to handle a lot more traffic, obviously, than Governor's Road. So displacing, you know, eighteen hundred to two thousand cars a day to Granite Ave, I would not expect would have as big of an impact on East Milton Square as it would, you know.
And when you're already sitting three, four light cycles just to get through the area, it does. It does. So, and literally, it is. You can come there in the afternoon. I, I don't travel in the morning because I'm going to Quincy. But when I come home in the afternoon, if I, you know, three lights, at five o'clock at night, you'll sit three light cycles at least, sometimes four. And, you know, you can see the frustration in people's faces.
Granite Ave going northbound? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yeah, it's brutal.
That's the toughest one of perhaps.
Everything else is working fine.
Yeah.
But that is not working. And that's why I, I shudder to think of what it would be like if you allowed people to take a left-hand turn up onto Edge Hill from there. I just, it would just, I shudder to think about it. I, I can't imagine what that would do to the traffic down there. And it wouldn't save any time anyways because that's where all the traffic is.
The consideration of the left turn from Granite onto Bolva.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we, we agreed it should be looked at, should be put to rest so everybody can say once and for all, we looked at it, we studied it, and this is the answer. Do we have a confidence level that's high that that makes sense? Probably not much. But I think we ought to look at it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, especially in the overall scope of what they're going to be doing traffic-wise down there. I think we'd be irresponsible not to consider it. So that's, that's the crux. I hope that allays the fears of the neighborhood. But that, I think it's quite the contrary where it's, it's in support of their concerns for traffic is that we're requiring this of Quincy and for nothing more and nothing less.
So do we have a motion to, can we hear from you, please? I guess, I'll hear from, and we don't want to, obviously, because we do have limited time, but if there are, I'll take two or three.
So the construction hasn't started yet, correct?
Yes, yes.
So once the construction's done, the no-left turn sign at the end of Governor's will be removed?
I think it's the next agenda.
That's the next thing on the agenda.
That's the next agenda, right. I think that may be coming out tomorrow depending on the action tonight.
Yes, sir, right there.
Should really come up.
I'd like to mention the difference in the roadways. Structure-wise, there's one glaring difference between Granite and Governor's. There's dozens of kids playing on Governor's Road.
I understand.
They're not grown up on Granite, they're not playing on Granite.
Understand that, understand.
I think, and I think that's the most important point here tonight. I, I was actually on Governor's with David, David Finn. And I think there was fifty or sixty kids just out playing.
Now, there are a lot of kids out there.
So, I mean, it's like building codes or anything. Public safety has to come first. You know, and I would rather put traffic onto Granite Avenue for a couple of weeks or six weeks, is it?
That'd be a good experiment and nothing else.
I mean, you got, you got a lot of traffic anyway. You got the, the overpasses. It's just a nightmare in East Milton. What's an extra six weeks more traffic just to keep our kids safe, I think?
And I think it's important to realize too, at least from my experience, that one of the factors that you're after, as Mr. Colhane just said and as that gentleman said about the increasing number of kids in the street. In my experience, when you're making your decisions, you've got to weigh safety first and it needs to come above convenience. And that you've got to be willing to give a little bit in terms of convenience in order to provide for the safety of kids and adults.
And we talk about, you know, being proactive versus reactive. If a kid got hit on Governor's Road, then we'd have no trouble moving everything onto Granite Ave. So why not do it now?
Now, the, the other thing you got to consider too, because it's, the, the other thing we got to consider too is, and I don't know if it will occur, but consider that if you put traffic, more traffic out onto Granite Ave, you're going to have people taking illegal right turns down Pierce and Pond Street and all those streets there because it's a lot easier to get through the square from Adam Street now.
When you say illegal, you mean driving down a one-way street the runway?
People are already doing it. People are already doing it.
That, that truly is an enforcement issue.
It is, I mean, and, no, you're right. It has nothing to do with Governor's Road, but, but it could be a consequence of, you know, the closures. And, and I think we just have to be aware of that. And it's not that I'm against the closure. I think it's a good experiment.
The town's done a pretty good job understanding the foolishness of some of the behavior of drivers. I mean, even the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot cut through.
Right, people take the path of least resistance.
But you go up to Adam Street and you can't take the left, you have to take the right. Now, I don't see many people take, and I hate to say I go to Dunkin' Donuts too much. I don't see people taking that left. I in fact see them needing to take the right. So, I mean, they really even thought about the circulation as it relates to coming out of the businesses. So I think the town's done a pretty good job understanding the misbehavior of drivers.
There's one more question and I have to end it there, unfortunately, but.
My wife and I, we own a property on Gardner Road and our lot, and the lot next to us is in Milton. So our one concern is we'd be cut off effectively from the community with this, with that end. So we had no way to get it, but our son will be attending Valdecott, you know, that kind of walk through West Quincy, over the expressway back, et cetera.
Problem.
Not to mention, property value, who the hell's going to want to buy that knowing that it's going on to Milton? It's just, there's a lot of concern that my wife and I have and.
So your property's in Milton, but the drive, but you're, you drive.
The only thing, yeah, and.
So you actually enter, you went to your driveway from Quincy, basically?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
You're on Edge, you're on Edge Hill?
Yeah.
Access is from Edge Hill, Quincy Edge Hill, and you back into Garden. Is that correct?
Yeah, two thirty-six and two thirty and.
Is there anything we can do about that?
We're, we're aware of that situation in a, in a permanent basis. We know we have to address that. One of the things that Quincy is looking at is, is possibly putting the, the closure at that side of, just south of the intersection at Edge Hill, but on Governor's. So people would not be inclined to loop up and through the neighborhood and come down to still allow you, you know, the people in your neighborhood to come in and out and.
Would that be the same problem? Just you shifting it over, sure?
I don't, well, we don't think so. We don't, we don't have a solution, but we're talking about that as being a possibility. And again, this, in a temporary basis, that won't be happening during construction. It is going to be closed during construction. So that concern for the next four to six weeks is genuine. Prior to anything coming through on a permanent sense, yours, yours is the unique situation that needs to be addressed in a. needs to be addressed and we're aware of it. We looked at all the other bordering houses that run on diagonals and we believe that we can give access to all of the other four houses that occur on, both on Governors and Plymouth without causing too much chaos.
Can we at least make it legal to park on the other side of the closure so he can get to school?
It's not as simple, I wish it was as simple as that. He literally has to, well, you know your neighborhood, but let's see if I do. You have to come down Governors and you cross an imaginary line, which is the Quincy line.
Yep.
And you drive three more houses before you get to the intersection of their Edge Hill.
Oh, I know what you mean.
You're in Quincy.
Yes, okay.
You then take a right onto their Edge Hill. And you're the second house on the right.
Exactly.
And he's Milton. And he's the only house in Milton. All those others in that corner are all Quincy.
The one next door as well, 230, is completely in Milton as well.
Two, yeah, there's two.
That's a development that's maybe
The next one up, the next one up, gotcha.
That's a development that's like 15 to 20 years old or? Yeah, okay. I know the one you mean, yeah. Okay. Even for six weeks, that's a big inconvenience. Talking about him going, how many miles out of his way?
It's not miles.
It's traffic.
In that morning, it is traffic.
Traffic and miles, yeah.
To go to Callicott, he would literally have to loop up through East Milton we just talked about.
Yeah. Can you put up with it for six weeks?
I think we have to.
I was going to say, you just have to make the sacrifice. You know? It's like
There's a problem, we see it. I'm sorry, this is just
We just bought the home. We would never, we just bought the closed house a month ago.
Right. But it gets better after six weeks.
I can assure you that you're not forgotten. In fact, you know, that we're well aware that there's two Milton homes there. Did you buy like the Arnold Otto House or something?
No, the one next door to Silla.
Okay. And Mr. Lynch is certainly aware of it too.
Yeah, we raised it at the kickoff meeting with Quincy. That was, that would be the initial deal with
Do we have a motion for this, or?
I think we have.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the traffic circulation controls as presented to the Board of Selectmen by the Department of Public Works with regard to Plymouth Avenue and Governors Road closures to minimize negative traffic impact imposed on local roadways during Quincy's reconstruction of Governors Road.
That would include Grafton Street as well?
Well, the fact that
They're not closing.
We don't need to close that. You cut off the Grafton.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you. Sorry for all the concern.
That's a good
Could be worse. You could be home watching the Red Sox.
No, this isn't over. Watching Valentine board his plane.
He's limbed back to Connecticut.
Might as well hang out for you.
Yeah, I think the Traffic Commission?
Yeah, Traffic Commission recommendations are next.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Take care.
So the first thing on the, on item eight, discussion of Traffic Commission recommendations is to adopt the design in figure four, page 10 of the Boston Regional Metropolitan Organization memorandum specific to the southern intersection plan, Brushill Road and Napa Valley Parkway. And that's So basically, we're talking about accepting the squaring off of the intersection at Napa Valley Parkway and
That's correct. There was a plan done by the Central Transportation Planning Organization, which was done on behalf of the town.
Yep.
In that they looked at the entire interchange. There was two proposals that they proposed to deal with the entire interchange. Both proposals dealt with the southerly intersection the same way. And this is to incorporate only that southerly intersection.
Okay.
And not the rest of it, which requires probably a little more debate, a little more vetting in the community.
Do we know what it's going to cost to do that?
We did an estimate on that.
A preliminary estimate is approximately $300,000 for just that one location.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the proposed change with you?
Not with us tonight.
You don't, unfortunately.
Bill, do you have it?
Bill, yeah, Bill would have it.
Oh, always have one.
Bill will have one.
Is that when you come down Brushill Road from Fuller?
Yes.
From Fuller.
And then you bear right, by Flatley Field, right?
It would propose as to bear right.
Propose as to bear right to a T junction?
That's correct.
Okay.
Creating a T rather than the skew that's there now.
Right.
That's what it is.
So that, that was proposed by the Traffic Commission? That was accepted by the Traffic Commission?
The Traffic Commission accepted the recommendation. That's right. The report was prepared by the Central Transportation Planning, CTP, Staff. Central Transportation Planning Staff. Typical acronyms out of DOT. They look at difficult and trouble and dangerous intersection on a regional basis and on the ones that are most dangerous, they pledge to go in and study and provide these analyses for communities and for other agencies. And so we knew that this was a concern. We asked them to look at it a couple of years ago and they did. And this past year, they completed that, delivered that report to us in the spring. Traffic Commission had been wrestling with it. We put it up a public comment on the town's website. We advertised it as such.
How was the feedback? I can see you have a lot of signatures at the, at the public meeting, the Traffic Commission meeting.
The Normal Street residents are still against it, I believe.
Right, the, the Brushill Neighborhood Association?
Yeah.
I think they go by, there's a formal name that they go by. They were opposed and they submitted a, you know, statement to that effect. But, you know, we, as Mr. Sweeney had said earlier, there's, you have to look at the overall situation. You have to, you know, look at compromise versus the interest of public safety. And we believed truly that the data support of the design, the analysis support of the design, it was, it was all based on contemporary information that was, you know, recently gathered as opposed to older information, which preliminary stuff had been done on.
Now, a question, Joe, is, I think one of those proposals, and I'm not sure if it was this one, called for a right turn lane?
That's correct.
Does this one call for that?
It does.
Okay.
Coming off of the Parkway to turn onto Brushill.
Yes, because now the traffic, the traffic would have to stop or
Nobody stops, you don't stop on a right turn. You have to decelerate.
Yeah.
That, that plan does in fact call for that.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because that's a road that I travel every day. I've mentioned many times, I have two teenage daughters that are driving now and like the amount of accidents they've almost got into right at that intersection is phenomenal. And so I'm totally in favor of this.
And as was the Traffic Commission. So our recommendation's coming out in a unanimous fashion.
But the Traffic Commission is going by what the, on the recommendation of some other
Of CTPS.
Yeah.
We received, we were the body that received the report on behalf of the town. We vetted it, meaning, you know, we reviewed it, we looked at it, we took comment on it. We considered all the alternatives and in the end selected that alternative to follow through on.
So Brushill Road is obviously a Milton road and Napa Valley Parkway is a
It's not. It's DOT, well, it's actually still DCR. They have not surrendered it to DOT yet. It's still a DCR roadway.
Brushill Road is?
The Napa Valley Parkway.
Napa Valley Parkway, right.
That's correct.
Brushill Road's a local road.
But the work is going to be done on Brushill Road, right?
With the interface, it's going to ultimately require DCR to sign on to this. We can't go out unilaterally based on any action that this Board of Selectmen might take. All it's going to do is give it an official capacity through our commission, through the Board of Selectmen, to say this is what we want to do. And we do have to go into an agreement, a memorandum of agreement with DCR to carry this out.
I think that's important to get out there because a lot of people would take it that we're actually going to start construction next week.
Well, absolutely not, no. Funding is very much important. DCR signing on to this, they were involved in the process. They know the report came out, they got copies of the report. So this isn't something that
So this is moving it to the next level.
That's correct.
And, okay, so maybe step two of 10. Would that be correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of improvements having made to that whole area down there that won't be addressed by this, but
Well, not even counting that. I think to Selectman Colhane's point is that this, for just that intersection realignment, this is step two of several more to come.
Right.
The next of which is to get DCR to sign on and get their approval through their agency to sign on. And then whether we, whether they give us unilateral authority to do it on our own or they want to participate with us, whether they, through some act of God, want to take it on on their own, fund it would be wonderful. And then, and then identify the funding source to get it done. So those are just five more steps in your 10-step process. We're in step two.
And is this correct, that there was a plan done by Boston Regional Metropolitan?
That's CTPS.
Okay.
No, you should make a motion.
That the plan, there was a plan done and that we're targeting a piece of that plan, specifically the intersection?
That is correct. That is correct.
I do know that, I can remember now, a couple of years ago that I walked the intersection and I know there's different groups that got different opinions on the intersection. My opinion when I walked it was I felt a concern for safety. In terms of, it seemed, it seemed dangerous to me. And there was like a little small parking lot here where some people walk their dogs and then you got these cars that it just seemed like it was, it was a dangerous intersection.
Well, plus the fact you got, you got a soccer field there.
That became an issue when the use got intensified about a year ago, if you remember. There was some real safety concerns.
Right. You have a soccer field there, there's no fences around the soccer field. There can be balls coming out onto Brushill Road and kids behind it and you get cars coming off of Napa Valley Parkway, up Brushill Road, potentially going at pretty high rates of speed.
Pretty fast, yeah.
So, yeah. It's a safety issue. I don't know if you want to wait for, or just want to make the motion.
I'm good.
Here he comes. So we can see it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is that figure four and figure five? Or they
This is figure four.
Figure four, okay, good.
I just picked the one because it's the same.
Correct. So if you look, there's a, there's a section down by the Milton Healthcare on the southerly part of the lower portion of that photograph. And then there's another detail of some alignment that they might do on the upper Milton Street
Is that the little parking lot right there?
We're only speaking about the one by the parking lot, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
So the, so we're looking at, the yellow is where the new road would be? Or what are we looking at?
That's, yes, the yellow. Yes, the yellow going across the corner is where the new road would be.
Green is existing.
Okay, initial left-hand turn.
Green is a bike path. Sidewalk, if you will.
Oh, existing is right here in gray.
That's correct.
And then, and then we'll have a, there'll be an offshoot to go to that parking lot.
That's correct. That's, keep in mind, this is a study. So, you know, these are based on, you know, reasonable engineering principles, but these are not designs. These are not suitable going off for construction. So, you know, will it look exactly like that? No. Will it look pretty similar to that? Probably.
Okay.
I can't tell you exactly where it's going to be, but
And it's going to take a little bit of the field to do that?
Correct. It may not take as much of that field.
Not the field, but
The corner.
The corner.
Okay.
The lane surface.
So, as, if we give this our blessing, is there still room for adjustments as you move forward? Or is this basically sort of going to be it?
There's always room for adjustment, always. There's some adjustment that is required depending on the funding source you use. So if this is coming through state funding or it's coming through any use of federal funds that require public participation, so that would even require to be hearings under those circumstances, which could result in adjustment. When you go up and actually survey it and see what the drainage is, you know, you tweak your design to make it fit a little better.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it except, you know, as we move forward, I just feel that when you're dealing with issues of safety, that everybody ought to be on board with it. And right now, I'm sort of, I'm on board with it and I think my colleagues are. But in my mind, I'm thinking of a fellow like, a fellow named Beecham who lives on Napa Valley Parkway and thinking of Roxanne Musto, Tim Cannon, fellow named Pascarella. They seem, all along seems to have had concerns. I know the Fuller Village residents, I think are definitely in favor of our position. It's just that if we've, moving forward, as we try to tackle other areas of concern in that area, I just would hope that we would have everybody on board with safety concerns.
And I think that, that's a great point. However, we, my feeling is we can discuss this for, for years to come.
And we already have been.
But unless we take a vote on it to move it to the next level, we'll never move it forward. You know, they'll have plenty of time to come on board and voice their concerns. This may never go through. This is just getting it to the next level. And I've met with Roxanne Musto about it. And we do differ on it, but I do respect her opinion, of course. She's my neighbor. But I'm the one that has to listen to my daughters that come home and say, I nearly get into a crash in this intersection.
And, and Mr. Colhane, your points are very well taken. The earliest throes of this, this has been hanging around for five, six, seven years as an issue in town.
Yeah.
I wasn't motivated by any particular neighborhood faction in one way or the other. I was, I was reported that there was a safety concern. I read preliminary reports that seemed to indicate there was traffic data, traffic accident data that suggested there was in fact safety concerns. The fact that it rose to the level of CTPS claritizing it as one of the more dangerous intersections in the entire region for them to even focus a study on it only solidifies that. It's more than perception, it's real accident data supporting the safety concern.
I'll make a motion to adopt, the design is drawn in figure four, page 10 of the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization memorandum dated March 1st, 2012. Specific to the southern intersection of the plan, Brushill Road and Napa Valley Parkway at the Milton Healthcare facility, and to frame an article for town meeting to secure funding for this project as it is essential to implementing the plan.
Second motion?
Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, motion been made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. The next, before we talk about the next one, there, there was one that was not approved, and that was the, the library one, and can we talk a little bit about that first?
Sure. The no-left turn Canton Avenue southbound to allow patrons to get into the driveway and cross these northbound traffic.
Yeah.
That's, that's a pretty drastic provision, would really affect the use of the library, it would also affect how people, if they, since they do want to use the library, they would likely go up Walnut Street, through Town Hall, parking lot, cut across, start navigating through Highland, you know, streets that they shouldn't really need to. We've looked at the library approach on a number of different occasions, and one approach that we looked at, that we pledged through this action to, to table in the meantime, was to look at the possibility, if it made any sense, rather than the crosshatch prohibition lane shift that we have over here, which people want to cheat, which is what continues to have the safety concern, rather than have the crosshatch to simply, on paper, not, not test, on paper, design and see if you can make that stretch from the library exit all the way up to the crest of the hill. Make it parking, on-street parking, perhaps with even a bump out, see if that shifts the, the traffic over, to prevent the safety concern. It's only an analysis that the, the commission felt ought to be done prior to prohibiting the left-hand turn.
I think what happens in the morning is the traffic is so bad there that...
It might back up to Gower Road.
Yeah, well, and people want to take that, it, you can't take the right turn on red because you can't get to it. That's, that's the biggest problem, that there's just not enough slip lane there to get there, you know, so, so people wind up using that area just to, to kind of, and, and, I mean, you're literally snaking by cars, you know, mirror to mirror when you, when you do it, but...
And in the morning, that's a way to move the traffic without too, too much concern for safety, because patrons, the libraries aren't open, and patrons aren't trying to get in to the driveway.
Too often, yeah. Had a couple instances where they were...
Now, people who get used to that practice, who now navigate through there at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock in the morning, the vast majority of people are obeying the lane shift, they're, they're doing the, the right thing, they're shifting over to the left.
Mm-hmm.
They're waiting at the light in traffic, they're leaving the space at the driveway so you don't block the driveway, and a patron coming southbound, awaiting to get into the library, I've done it myself, I will not wave anybody in until I look at the lever and make sure that my right-hand lane is clear. Even though there's crosshatching there, I have seen people come sailing over there, only to have a courteous person allow the person to come in as it's marked.
Yep.
Only to get broadsided. It's, it's, there are several accidents that have occurred there over the years.
Is there a way to put signage up there to say what that thing means? Well, Braintree does. I, I've seen it a couple places in Braintree.
What the, what the crosshatching means?
Yeah, 'cause people don't know what it means.
Well, I think we, Tom, we did, when Kevin was here, he, he asked you to order it, and I guess it was, you know, months ago, it was two weeks out.
The sign for...
You, you put a sign up, as Tom was saying, because most people don't know what that box is for.
The crosshatching?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Do not block intersection.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Like, I, I was saying at the time, you know, I grew up in Ireland, like, and if you went into that box and you stayed on it, you got fined. It's a, it's a traffic offense.
Actually, Europeans are very familiar with what that means, 'cause that's how they delineate it.
Right. And we go to the library a lot, and I can't, I can't make that left turn in there because somebody is actually just parked in that box. So I asked, when Kevin was the town administrator, I asked him, and Tom, I think, asked, could we get a sign just telling people, "Do not park in this box"?
I have to apologize. If I was told that, I, I dropped the ball on it, because I don't remember that coming in, but I hate to say that I, I must have dropped, dropped the ball on it.
Because every time I go by, I'm, I'm hoping I'll see it there, and it's, it's not, but I think it should be there because, so, people are just not accustomed to those boxes.
So the request coming out of the library trustees was to put the, prohibit the left-hand turn as a last resort, they wanted to prohibit it, and the traffic commission's recommendation at the point was, "Not yet. We're, we're looking at these other things," which now includes the, you know, clear signage.
The left-hand turn, when you, when you do take, if you're on Edge Hill coming from Colley Court Cunningham up, and because you've got that green arrow, that's a real short green arrow, and only lets a couple of cars through, people tend to take that turn pretty quick to, and then all of a sudden, you're right on top of a car trying to take a left into that parking lot, 'cause it's not a very long distance.
Right, which just solidifies the fact that if people knew what the box was, you'd never have somebody in that box. You can take the left...
And people would be able to take a left.
And go right into the library.
Right, 'cause now people are waiting there, and they can't get across, yeah.
So we'll add that to the things that we will do, in addition to looking at the on-street parking.
I think it could be a test. You could put the sign up, and people will get to know that this box is a no-parking zone at any given time, even when the, when, when you're backed up from the light, you stay behind it or in front of it, and somebody taking a left from Pleasant Street can just go right into the library. There should never be a car in that box. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. I think it does.
Then the sign would...
Then you wouldn't need it, do not take a left turn.
Yeah, it would help...
By keeping that clear.
The safety of vehicles wanting to go in on the left.
Because they can do it quicker.
Yeah.
They get in there without having to wait for cars to move out of that box. Okay. The, and the next thing is, is one I definitely agree with. This is a no-left-hand turn between eight and nine, and two and three, eastbound at Edge Hill Road, adjacent to the driveway entrance to Colley Court School, and basically, the traffic is pretty, because you have two crossing guards already, and you're backing traffic up pretty far on Edge Hill Road in that hour of the morning, and then if you have traffic trying to take a left at the same time, it's even worse.
School site management has looked carefully at the circulation of the onsite drop-off and, and pickup, and they work really closely with traffic crossing guards, as well as the traffic control officers, and, and they think this is the last element to keep the traffic moving, and it's gonna take some thought, but, you know, if you're looking to get into the school, you need to come around the block and come in from the same side of the school so you're not crossing over traffic, and it makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm.
The commission was, you know, unanimous in this recommendation as well.
Okay. So that'll be a motion to amend Article seven, Section twenty-two of the Traffic Rules and Orders, so as to include... Eight, I'm sorry. Traffic Rules and Orders, so as to include Edge Hill Road, install a no-left-hand turn into driveway Monday through Friday, eight to nine a.m., and two to three p.m. on the eastbound side of Edge Hill Road, adjacent to the driveway entrance to Colley Court School. The traffic commission will review the effectiveness of this sign at the conclusion of the school year.
Second motion.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment. So does that mean when you're, when you gotta drop your kid off, you have to drop your, you can't take that left turn and go around the back of the school, is that correct?
That's, they don't want you to cross the west, I guess it's westbound lane of Edge Hill, they don't want you to do that.
Right.
If you're coming, if you're coming from the basic side, Metrakis' side, but they, what the school site council wants you to do is to drive down Pleasant Street, up Century, to be on that correct side, and then into the back of the school without crossing traffic. They want it all to be in a circulating fashion with no crossing of traffic, and it's only during, you know, to drop off and pick up hours.
Two hours, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion?
Only that, you know, I've thought about it, and I had mentioned it to the traffic commission, and that's why they basically said they're gonna review it. The concern that, that I had was that if you're a parent coming from Metrakis' eastbound, where do you let your child off? Now, the suggestion is, you drive down Pleasant, up Century. Parents aren't gonna do that. What they are gonna do is they're gonna see if there's any space in front on Edge Hill, in front of the schools.
Which is what'll wipe it down.
If that, if that doesn't work, you bang a right at like Fuller's Lane before you get to the schools, and look for the next available spot.
Right.
And so I had a concern about that, but overall, I'm okay with the suggestion because...
You've got two crossing guards there anyway.
Yeah, I know, I understand the other aspects of it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's two crossing guards, and a lot of people do that anyways, the parking at Edge Hill and...
It has the approval of the principals, and approval of the traffic commission, and I'm just hoping that they're right.
I think it'll be pretty safe, because, you know, it is a school zone, there's traffic calming, there's two crossing guards. Most people, I think you're right, will drop their kid off across the street, and then they gotta walk across.
The speed going by the schools during the school hours, that's, I'm very impressed with the motorists. They keep it down, well, they sort of have to, 'cause it's so busy that...
Question or anything.
You've got your traffic guards there, and your school zone lights, and I'd like to say, say and thank Mr. Jack Calavero publicly, he fixed the, coming eastbound, there's a, was a light, the speed zone light, the twenty hadn't been working for a number of years, and through Mr. Calavero's efforts, and those that work for him, they've fixed that problem. I think that's...
Rebuilt the light.
Yeah. I actually think that they made, no, I think they had to make the, the two-zero, I think it made from Plexiglas or something, they had to cut it. It wasn't easy.
They had, they had to rebuild it.
Yeah.
Another bulb change.
Six million dollar light. We can rebuild them.
And make it better.
TV show reference, not possible.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and the last one is to remove the temporary no-left-turn sign on Governor's Road at the intersection of Warner and Edge Hill Road. Signs, that's plural.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Other than to say that the, the sign was vandalized, and I examined it, at fir-, before I looked at it, the vandalism, I figured, oh, this must be kids. My opinion is that because it was a black painted, very neat job, and the left, no, no left arrow was painted out, leaving just the red circle, it was a very neat job.
I don't even think the reds...
I'm gonna guess it was a, I'm gonna guess it was a disgruntled motorist that didn't like our efforts.
Your investigative skills are phenomenal.
It was not random graffiti.
No. Does, not give that guy, woman a painting job for the town.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And there was one more thing I can't show you. Isn't there a, don't we have something on the, what the hell was it? Side, was something sidewalks?
Atherton Street.
Yes.
Was a, was a request.
But no, nothing's been done with it yet.
Um, we're in the midst, we just completed the water project out there.
Right.
We will be embarking upon the roadway reconstruction, which we will do to binder this year, and bring to completion next year, so the opportunity to make a sidewalk is ripe upon us. It really boils right down to the, do we have enough width? We think we do, between the stone walls that are on either side of the street.
Yeah.
And the street, and the street gutters themselves, barring tray removals and telephone pole locations. We think we could sneak a sidewalk in there, but...
But that's just that short little portion between Canton, the...
Right, and there's actually some...
The, the death alley, still isn't gonna get a sidewalk between, between Brushill and...
I don't know what the reference of the death alley is, I'm sorry.
I'm amazed somebody hasn't got killed in that road, and it's so narrow.
Between Brushill and where?
Between, between, yeah, Bradley Road, between, it's Bradley, actually.
Oh, Long Bradley.
Yeah. Yeah. I can remember, and just as an aside, somebody in their infinite wisdom back when my son was, I think in eighth, seventh or eighth grade, decided that from my house on Blue Hill Ave, with no sidewalks, with no crossing guards, that the bus stop was going to be at the end of Bradley Road at Brushill. So somehow, he had to get from my house to Brushill, across Blue Hill Ave, with no crossing guard and no sidewalks, and that was insane. But, but it is, it is a tough, that, that road is very narrow, and there's no sidewalks on it.
It's just been repaved.
Yeah.
That's, Bradley has already been repaved to binder. The water main work is completed to binder at this point. It won't get, won't get its finished work until next spring.
When is the, again, an aside, Tom, if it's okay, when is the Atherton, on the other side of Bradley, on the other side?
It would have already been done, except that we had some water pressure testing concerns over there that we needed them to complete, which have been completed and is satisfactory, so that's gonna be reclaimed this week or next week?
I believe not next week, but the following week is the schedule right now.
And then bind, it's such a short road, binder shortly thereafter, so within the next couple of weeks, that, that piece will be paved to binder. Now, with water, any, any roadway work through, we've done recent trenching, like water main projects, we let the binder sit, and that binder's smoother than many of the roads were to begin with, so people are satisfied, I think it's the finished product, and we, to shock their ears, it's only halfway done. We, we let it go through one freeze-thaw cycle through the winter, because any trench settlement that might happen, you want to have finish before you go in and top it, otherwise you just end up with rocks right around, so we like to let it go through one freeze-thaw cycle before we finish it, so...
All right. I think that's it, right?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Sorry to be so long-winded, again. Appreciate your support, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, item ten, I think, is the next thing on the agenda, right? And that's the approval of the November election warrant.
Is that a motion?
The motion will be seconded, okay. Okay, Bob, there's been a motion...
Number ten.
Number ten, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve and sign the November election warrant. Any discussion on that motion?
Is, is it six warrant articles?
No, that's, that's just the, the election warrant.
Oh, the, I'm sorry.
So that's just the, the little thing that goes out.
Misread, yeah.
Um, you know, explaining the, there's a couple of ballot questions, and, what, the three ballot, well, they'll, they'll be the...
We actually got it late because the state didn't forward it to the clerk's office, but I agree...
So there's, there's two ballot questions?
Five questions.
Okay, there's CPA.
I can actually make copies if you want to see it, but we just, I just have the copy for signature.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are the questions on it, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, so we've got, oh, yeah, we've got the right-to-know law on motor vehicles. Got question two.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, what was that for, sir?
The right-to-know on, um...
Repair.
Yeah, repair.
Motor vehicle repair.
So they, for...
Dealerships gotta share information about...
The manufacturers have to share the, the codes, the computer codes with...
With repair shops.
Repair shops. And number two would be the prescribed medication for terminally ill patients to, to end life. Number three would be the legalization of medical marijuana, and number four is the, yeah, number four is community preservation, and number five is a non-binding, I haven't even read this one, yes, Congress, President, prevent cuts to Social Security, Medicare, and Veterans benefits. So it's a non-binding referendum. So those are the questions on the ballot, and then there will be obviously the ballot itself. So, motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item eleven is approval of traffic supervisor position.
Make a motion to approve the application of Shannon Dillon, fifty-four Audubon Road, to the position of traffic supervisor in the police department, contingent upon the approval by the personnel board.
Second motion.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item twelve is the approval of a park department truck lease application, and basically what has happened is the park department has been leasing a truck under its own budget for the past probably three or four years. I forget how long the lease was, the lease...
It's a five-year lease, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, time flies, 'cause I remember approving it on the warrant committee, but the, the lease has attempted fruition, and, and one of those leases with no-cost buyout, you know, so, or nominal, you know, dollar purchase price or something like that. So they are re-leasing a new truck, they're gonna retire one of their trucks, they have a truck with a hundred and fifteen thousand miles, a nineteen ninety-five F-350 dump truck, which they're gonna retire, I think they already did, they traded it.
Yes, they traded it in Mr. Chairman.
And so they're keeping the same number of vehicles, but just leasing a new vehicle, you know, just kind of rotating its fleet.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a lease agreement.
There's a revised, revised motion.
Oh, there's a revised motion?
Yes. Right there.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to immediately sign a lease agreement between the town and All American Investment Group, LLC, to lease with an option to purchase one two thousand and thirteen Chevrolet, one-ton dump truck for use by the Parks and Recreation Department.
I guess you gotta read the rest, unfortunately.
You have some more reading to give, Mr. Cohane.
You have the whole page, Mr. Cohane.
We wanna hear the whole thing.
Be it resolved, as the governing body of the Lece, that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described on Exhibit A of the Schedule Number One, dated September twenty-first, two thousand and twelve of the lease, with option to purchase agreement dated as of September twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, between the town of Milton, the Lece, and All American Investment Group, LLC, the Lesar. And, as the governing body of the Lece, the board has determined that the agreement substantially in the form presented to this meeting is in the best interest of the Lece for the acquisition of such equipment, and the governing body hereby approves the entering into of the agreement by the Lece, and hereby designates and authorizes the following persons, J. Thomas Hurley, to execute and deliver the agreement on Lece's behalf, with such changes thereto as such persons deem appropriate, and any related documents, including any payment request form requesting funds from the vendor payable account necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the agreement, and to authorize the chairman to immediately sign Exhibit E and Exhibit G, and to authorize Dennis F. Cohane to immediately sign Exhibit E. Is that a different motion?
Part of the same motion.
It's probably the same, yeah.
To authorize Dave Pertios to immediately sign Exhibits B, C, and F, and to authorize Mr. Pertios to sign Exhibit... Mr. Pertios to sign Exhibit 1, or is that aye?
Aye.
Aye. Certificate of acceptance only after the dump truck is delivered to the Town of Milton, and the Town of Milton inspects the dump truck and determines that it complies with the applicable specifications and that it is, is fit for its intended purpose, and to authorize Mr. Pertios to sign Exhibit J, payment request form only after the dump truck is delivered to the Town of Milton, and the Town of Milton inspects, inspects the dump truck and determines that it complies with the applicable specifications, and that it is fit for its intended use.
The end.
The end.
Very good.
Very good.
I didn't hear all of it. Could you repeat? Here. I'll second the motion. If you won't repeat it, I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, uh, approval of library staff association contract, and, um, Emery, would you like to explain the, um...
Sure, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is a one-year contract for your library staff. It is a 2% on July 1st, 2012, and a half a percent on June 30th, 2013, at 11, 115959. It's a one-year contract, and the, there also is an additional increase in their stipends, I mean, I'm sorry, in their, in, um, differentials.
So it's similar to the other contracts?
It's, it, it mirrors your police contracts and your clerical contract.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve an agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Public Library Staff Association for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so, getting near the end. Uh, some sign requests. First one is to approve a request for G.H. Benton Company for a temporary A-frame sign advertising the product line to be placed on the sidewalk in front of the business located at 7 Pleasant Street.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
I just, is there any timeline on this?
There isn't, um...
A temporary, a temporary signage, it's only for 45 days, and they have to come back to the board to have it renewed for another 45 days.
Okay.
So in a way, it's kind of almost like a, um, trial period.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, was, was the motion seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next one is to approve the display of a banner on the town green for a Board of Health-sponsored event that will feature a motivational speaker on drug and alcohol abuse, and to schedule, and is scheduled to take place on Thursday, October 18th, 2012, in Milton High School.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the final one is to approve a request from the Milton Garden Club to display a temporary banner on the library lawn announcing the annual perennial sale for the period of April 27th through May 11th, 2013, contingent upon approval by the library trustees.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Wasn't there, was there another request?
Other than these three?
No, um, the same thing with the Milton, was that the Milton Garden Club?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no, I just see something else in the letter here. Okay.
Okay. Okay, motion been made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Um, just one question, kind of a follow-up from last meeting, that we had a gentleman here that, um, from, I forget what the name of the association was.
At Space Milton.
Yes, that, um, did we get the police chief to weigh in on?
Yes. He approved.
Fine, okay. So those are all set?
Yes.
He's actually going to provide an auxiliary police officer.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, and we have some approval of road races. Make a motion to approve a request to use the town's streets and ways for the fifth annual Milton Thanksgiving 5K road race for Best Buddies, that is scheduled for Saturday, November 17th, 2012, contingent upon approval by the police chief.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made, seconded, it's a fun road race, I've run it a couple of times, and it can be a little cool out there, but, uh, but it's a nice, it's a nice course. So any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Make a motion to approve a request to use the town's streets and ways for the annual